I'd like to call the December seventh, twenty twenty-three Wall City Council meeting to order. I would ask the finance officer, please read roll call.
Welsh?
Here.
Morgan?
Here.
Stan Anderson?
Here.
Houston?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Hock?
Here.
Mike Anderson?
Here.
We do have a form.
Okay, we will stand and say pleasantly. Wayne Shaw, would you please lead us? Is there any order of business for emergencies?
No.
Do we have attendance on Zoom?
Councilman Stan Anderson is on Zoom.
Okay, thank you. And that brings us to the police report. So Deputy, welcome.
Deputy Chris Austin of the Sheriff's Office, Sergeant Lawson couldn't be here tonight because she is actually doing what we did last week. She's having the community outreach program with the sheriff of Hilton City. This was there. So a monthly meeting for November, uh, pretty straightforward, nothing really is jumps out at you out of abnormalities. The only thing that was different is last week we got three DUIs. Kind of rare to get a DUI out here while last week or last month we had three of them. Um, one of those worthy of mentioning was a juvenile that had in their possession a fake ID. Uh, so obviously we're not sure where that came from, but that's something that we're gonna be looking into. Um, having this many DUIs, obviously it's out of the ordinary. We're planning on kind of combating this with more bar checks, more walkthroughs. Somebody appears to be underage, we're gonna verify that by looking at their ID and whatnot, and hopefully we can not make this normal. Does anybody have any questions for the police reporter about that?
So what are you referring to when you say like bar checks? What does that involve?
So as patrol officers, we'll just take it, it'll take time to walk through a bar, um, extended presence. It's kind of like a, a, a business check of sorts where we go into the, you know, wall drug, for instance, or wall food center. And, you know, we just spend a little bit more time in there saying hi, chatting with whoever working, saying hi to the customers. We'll be doing the same thing, uh, just classify it a little bit differently because it's an alcohol bar, um, bar check. If that makes sense.
Deputy, if you observe somebody that, uh, uh, you feel is obviously underage, can you ask for identification?
Sure, we can ask, and, um, if, you know, if it comes to it, we can always chat with the bartender as well and be like, hey, you need to check this person's ID. And, you know, better be safe than sorry and make sure that they are underage. This person had a, you know, this juvenile had a fake ID, fake IDs are kind of out outside the norm, they're not super frequent or popular. Um, so it's concerning as far as where they get it and whatnot. This case, since it was a DUI, we confiscated it, I was the deputy who worked that. Um, but obviously first through that out and see what we can find out, just fake IDs are something obviously to be wary of. Um, especially if they're juvenile, they, they say they're over twenty-one, and if they're coming into a bar in town here, and then passing that off as something that everybody needs to be aware of.
And I, it was brought to my attention last year's celebration that there was a lot of that going on, also, the fake IDs.
I believe there was, um, this year I didn't have, I did not work during the wall celebration, so I can't attest to, to this year at all. Um, but yeah, I think there was made mention of some, some big ideas kind of running around, so.
So if we kind of establish that norm, that higher expectation, maybe that will help us carry through celebration.
Yeah, hopefully.
Okay, and your event, uh, your community engagement was awesome.
Good to hear.
We got lots of good feedback for those that you attended, did you have any comments on this?
It was great. Good, I'm glad.
So, uh, please share with the sergeant, we really appreciate and share that they got that set up, and that's a great way to get to know those people.
Yeah, for sure, new faces you don't see every day, so.
Right, yes, and the fact that the treasurer and the state's attorney was here, although it was, I'm amazing. Uh, surprised me, I didn't expect that, so very good. All right.
All right, thank you.
You have a good rest of the evening, thank you, sir. Okay, with that, do we have anyone that needs to declare a conflict of interest, uh, considering other items on the agenda? Hearing or seeing none, uh, I would ask for a motion to approve the minutes of the November twenty-first meeting.
Second.
Moved in second and approved the minute. Any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion passed. I think I heard you again, okay, so moving on then, in front of you are the claims for the city of Wall, the fire department, and the library. Is there any, um, questions or concerns about any of the claims in front of us this evening? If not, may I have a motion to approve, pay those claims?
Move to approve.
Case been moved. Mike is seconded, any questions or concerns? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. Okay, in front of you also is, uh, the on-call scheduled employee overtime sick vacation report, the water usage report, the sales tax, and the BBB report, the expense budget, as well as a building permit for the demolition of a trailer on five oh nine Ferret Street. Any questions or concerns about any of those items? Hearing or seeing none, that will move us into, uh, public comments because, um, is Lily behind that? She'll be here ten minutes, so Lily is, uh, safely driving back from Rapid City, and so if we give her ten more minutes, she would be here and will have a bunch ambulance report for us. Is there any objection to moving her further down the agenda? Any council member disapprove of that? Okay, so when she comes in, make sure I notice that, please. Item number twelve is public comments, where this is a time for the public to discuss or express concerns. Nothing, uh, that's on the agenda and no action would be taken. Is there anyone that wants to make public comments this evening? Seeing none, we move into item thirteen, and that is a building permit for Wayne and Melanie Shaw to build a garage at eight oh eight, uh, Glen Street. Does anyone have any questions? Because with them being here, we have just the answers that we need.
Did you see the permit here? I'd make a motion to approve.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any other questions or concerns? Anything you guys want to say? Nope, you're good with it, all right?
No.
I don't know if there, we need a variance from the, as long as we go, um, even not with the building, even with the Plains Motels itself, because there's a, a electrical structure in the alley, I would say, probably. We'd be inside of that, we'd be west of that. We would not be, I don't think we're out as far as the Plains Motel east side. Like, there's a little bit of an apron sticking out. Maybe a foot off of that, but it'll be twenty-five foot deep off that.
Any issue with that, Garrett? Okay, anyone else? Okay, so, uh, seeing no other questions or concerns, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post? Stan, did I hear you?
Yes, aye.
Okay, motion carries, thank you, sir. All right, so I believe our, our speaker did arise, so Lily, we're glad you made it back. And you would like to visit with us, is that correct?
Yeah, well first I'm gonna give a report, um, so for the month of November, we had eleven runs. Uh, out of these eleven runs, we had only seven transports, and, um, I told you before, guys, we only bill for transports. We had one canceled and three refused. For this year so far, which has been pretty much its end of the year, we have only one month left. The total of runs, we have hundred fifty-three, and only ninety-two transports. Uh, so this is a very important number for us, um, transporters. We had canceled or no medical need about thirty for the year, and thirty-one refused. So I am here today. Uh, the, the city gives us budget, um, every year, and we receive amount on a quarterly basis normally, which in this year was a different. So I would like actually to see if city will reconsider the way they given us money, not on quarterly basis, and maybe do, um, fifty percent of the amount from the beginning of the year, and then another fifty percent in the middle of the year. So do a little bit different schedules for us, that's what I'm asking for. See, and I'm gonna ask Melanie to actually come, come over here and talk about our budget, and explain why we asking, what are we asking, um?
This is a technically a budget that's in front of you, it's, it's a cash flow. And if you remember right, it was in January of last year when things kind of started going south as far as being able to make payroll. And that's when all of the, um, scare came into our community that we were gonna lose our ambulance service. And as you can see, in November, right in the middle of your sheet, the ending balance is at ninety-eight thousand three hundred. This is what's in our checking account as of the end of November, which sounds really, really great. Um, but we average about thirty-three thousand in expenses every month. And so that goes away really, really fast. And we see the majority of our money typically when the taxes are paid, the real estate taxes. So about June, we get a big lump sum, and it does appear that with the tax roll and what the levy was put on, we should be expecting a considerably higher amount from the county. However, we're not gonna make it until then as far as our cash flow. And you can see that by March, we're already negative thirteen thousand seven hundred dollars. Lily's number that she gave you earlier tell you of the number of transports, and they are what we get paid on. But the percentage of our payments are a little over fifty percent, and they're not at full value of what it actually costs us to transfer a patient. And so I have gone over the last year, and that's how the five thousand dollars a month is money coming in, and that's our payments, that we are transporting. That's probably a lofty number for every month to see that, some months we see it and some months we don't. So I think this number represents, or the whole cash flow in general, represents the fact that we're gonna need our funding probably earlier. We also have, um, in order to maintain people in our community to, um, be on our EMT course, we're gonna have to raise their skill, their salaries. We thought that we were right in there, times have changed. Inflation has gone up, and in order to keep the people, we have a pretty good core group of people right now, but we're not gonna be able to keep them if we don't give them a raise and change a few things. And so that is something that we have to consider in our prior year, next year's budget as well. So any questions on the cash flow and why Lily's request is what it is?
And specifically, the request is to get fifty percent this month, or first of January, or in?
Beginning of the year, around the first payment, usually or something.
And then the other half at, in June?
Yeah, or July.
July? And Carolyn, do you see any problems with doing it that way? Will that mess you up terribly?
No, um, you know, I guess the reason I, when we set this all up in the budget of giving entities money, the library, the fire department, all of that, you know, I could have done it in a monthly payout, but then you're writing checks all the time, you know, and so I just set it up as quarterly, you know, um, but this'll cut down two checks versus four checks, you know, if you wanna look at it that way, you know, so they all get their money anyway, basically, so. See a problem with that.
You don't have to change anything or anything, you just, just write it out.
Do you have, have a motion to?
I would appreciate a, a motion, just because that way it's been discussed and, you know, it shows that you guys are in support of doing that motion.
Okay, so Jerry has moved.
Second.
And Dan has seconded that we, uh, distribute our per se year, uh, as opposed to a quarterly, um, plan that we've used previously.
Do we have an, of the distribution?
Um, their budget for twenty twenty-four, I don't have that budget reporting right now, but it was like a hundred and fourteen. So, you know, there's, and some odd dollars, so. It'd be half of that.
So it'd be about fifty?
Right, is that what you were thinking?
Fifty-seven thousand, right? Okay, good question. All right, so we do have a motion to approve, any other questions? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
All right.
Aye.
Post, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And keep up the good work, you guys have really turned that service around for us, and, um, it's valued, so thank you. Okay, that brings us.
I don't get all my information on Facebook, but I, there was a post, um, week ago or something that Shields, shirt with Shields was giving money, how old? Why?
I don't have it, funny. They're all, I gotta check twice a year.
For nonprofits, and I was just wondering.
Well, technically, the ambulance is, is not the five oh one C three.
All right. We don't, we don't have nonprofit status right now.
Then that won't work for you, then, okay.
Thank you.
Just trying, trying.
Okay, good question though, and good to know that and understand that, what your, uh, organization status is, so, okay. All right, that moves us then to item fourteen, and that is the retail on-on-sale wine license for C nine enterprises. And we have to do those separately, are we gonna do it together?
Together.
Retail on-sale restaurant, uh, license for C nine. Would I have a motion to approve?
So move.
It's been moved and seconded, any questions or concerns? All those in favor say aye.
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 Post, motion carries. All right, that brings us to item number fifteen. And that is, uh, what, we have a visitor here, although he's a familiar face.
Good evening.
Got his staff to look on.
I do. Trying something new. Um, I put in front of you the, um, West Fourth Avenue Street improvements project, uh, we had the bid, um, on the twenty-eighth, which was Tuesday at two PM, and we had, uh, two contractors participate by giving us, um, uh, formal bids, and, which we did have a fair amount of interest, and, um, but then at the end, uh, two submitted, um, one was, uh, True Form out of Rapid City, and other was, uh, Holstein Excavating out of Edington, Minnesota. Um, in the end, uh, Holstein was the low bidder, um, with, um, oh, they ended up with a bid of four million sixty-three thousand nine hundred ninety-one and thirty-five cents. And we went through and we checked, um, Holstein's bid and True Form's bid, and both bids, math checked out, paperwork checked out. Um, I did check into Holstein because I, I've never worked with them before, so I checked in with them, um, with some of the people I know in the eastern part of the state, and, um, they're, they do really good work, um, they're, they put a pretty good schedule together as well, and I, I didn't really hear anything to be concerned about with them at all. The biggest thing that they're looking to do work here is that on the eastern part of the state in twenty-four, there's not very many concrete paving jobs. So that's why they were looking out here to, to do work, so. Um, like I said, they, they submitted all the proper paper requirements, and on this, we had a few more paper requirements that they had to submit because of, uh, some of the funding that, um, we're looking into that Carolyn's, um, been looking into is, it has, uh, what's called BABA, it's by American Better requirements, so it's by Americans, what it, um, so they submitted the proper stuff there, um, and then, um, one thing that we really dug into is that their, their bid of a little over four million was over our engineer's estimate of three point five million. So then we went back to the contractor to see, you know, is there any sort of savings we can talk about and work through? And one of the things, uh, we hit on right away was trying to utilize the airport Millings gravel that the large stockpile that Garrett has out there for that, and looks like what we could do is, um, so we have the eight-inch concrete road, and then we have eight inches of gravel under eight-inch concrete. And Geotech said that he's comfortable with the very bottom two inches of that gravel instead of a, what we call a virgin gravel that's trucked in. He thought we could just go and use those asphalt Millings from the airport, and that'll be our bottom two inches, and then above that we'll have six inches of, uh, new virgin gravel, uh, that's a pretty good savings, um. If he can haul all of his Millings to the airport, that's another savings, um, by using again the Millings and the gravel mix, just for where we have some around railroad tracks and stuff, we just have gravel we need to put back there, there's a savings there. All those savings put together is a hundred and thirty-one thousand seven hundred forty-two and ninety cents, so that's a pretty good savings that he's, uh, offered up, and we kind of worked with him on, um. One, one thing, he's able to provide a six thousand dollar savings if he can just tear up the asphalt road from Airport Road all the way to the railroad all at one time. And then we do have allocated that he can put back some of those airport asphalt Millings as timber and surface for, for the homeowners in there and stuff to kind of get around, and if he needs to add more, he just adds more and just kind of keeps it cleaned up. That way, that way the mail machine, when it comes in to remove that asphalt off, off of fourth, they can just do it all at once, and then they're, then they're out of there, so. That's kind of that savings, so.
So that's related in that figure in item number eleven, that milling all at once, six thousand dollars, is that what you're talking about? Okay, exactly. Good job.
Yeah, that's, that's a nice one, the one right above that, the forty-nine thousand six hundred twelve savings. That's where he can just take his Millings and put them into the pile, it's already over at Airport, so the four thousand Millings will just be right over there. Yeah, so it's a pretty good savings by just using some of those materials that are right over there, um. As part of that, uh, we do, we do know there's gonna be some more savings too, where they talked to Garrett about, on the very west, we have some storm drain, um, kind of around Golden West, and then by the church, and we're gonna reconfigure that and combine those. And we're gonna pick up the savings there, a little over thirty thousand some dollars there, too. I would like to get the contractor under contact and then do that as our first change orders, have a change order deduct, uh, because that's kind of using some of his bid, bid pricing, so. Yeah, so we can get some more savings out of there to get that down, we won't be able to get it all the way down. The three point five million budget we went into this whole thing with, but this gets it closer.
Daniel, where was, um, your guys' original estimate was three point five, was, was the difference kind of spread out, or was there something that, that, that was kind of?
Although, yeah, a little bit spread out, the, the concrete number's really been going up high. I think we, we thought the concrete would be about a hundred and fifty dollars per square yard, and they came in about one sixty, which is right where True Form was too, um, that's number, number thirty-five on the first page of, like, uh, all the language, it's a lot to look at there. Um, yeah, we thought it'd be about one fifty, Holstein was one sixty point five, and then True Form was one sixty-two, this first square yard. Um, so there's a little bit there, but then, um, Holstein's got a fairly large, um, the very top number, number one, they're a fairly large mobilization of six hundred sixty thousand compared to the True Form and compared to what we thought. Um, and that, that, that's not truly all mobilization, it's permits, and, uh, for these guys, since they're coming from Minnesota, it truly could be motels and food and , um, things like that for me, that could truly be a lot of that for them. Um, some guys, they like to, the things that are in that item, go sort of dump it in there too, um, specific places, for, for price. The, the one thing I like about Holstein's number is they are five hundred thousand dollars lower than True Form's number. So there's a pretty substantial difference there, um, you know, savings-wise. Um, but yeah, just overall, the, um, just the pricing just continues to what I'm, it's, and, and it's been going on for three years, as you guys, as you know, um, but it's a continuing fuel, very difficult to find labor, uh, in every industry, kind of has that same problem. There's so much work going on in our region that is just, yeah, it's difficult to budget for this stuff right now, um. Is there any questions on the bid party?
Well, I'm glad that you researched Holstein, and they seem to be like a very good company to do the work for us.
Yeah, and, uh, and, and really, um, who, who put our project in front of them was, uh, the Chicago Concrete Paving Association, where these contractors are members of that association, and, and I've been in touch with that association a fair amount, and so they kind of get the word out of, hey, there's one coming to Wal, and you know, that's kind of how the word got out to them. Yeah, it's, it's nice that they're looking at this, and we put it in the plan reviews and stuff over there. What was your, buy back American, what do you call that? So what that is, is when, when you use federal dollars, which we're looking at a, a greed and a redneck, which is through a USDA USDA rule electric program for federal dollars, and that is part of the, uh, infrastructure money that the Congress and administration passed this last, last year, I think it was, where COVID money, basically. So within that, they had required So within that, they had requirements where. Um materials have to be American, maybe what it aligns to, um and it's. It used to be a lot of just American iron steel, now it's. Basically, everything's got to be American, um come with the cost, it's a good. It's a good idea, it's a good program in terms of it keeps things made in America, which is a good thing, but uh it does come with the cost.
And does it set a salary amount or a wage?
It it does not, and that was a question that we actually had, that's the Davis Bacon Program.
Oh, okay.
Um that that was a question, um a lot of times that is a requirement and we checked and that wasn't a requirement, so.
Yeah, any other question?
Um one, one thing I can add is. Holstein indicated that crawl ready mix here in town is, they're going to add to their plant a little bit so they can make sure they're going to. Meet the requirements, uh the state requirements is what it is, they have to add a flash hopper to their plant. And uh so their their intent is that they're going to do that and then the concrete's going to come out of the the crawl plant right in the towns. Which is good, that's another good thing.
Okay, any other questions or thoughts? Are we at the point to ask if we want to award this bid to Holstein? Um Excavating Incorporated?
Oh, I'll add a little more context to that too, um so Carolyn, I've been working for her amount and and Mary and others. Uh last couple of days about the budget, different things, really kind of honing in on the the loans and and. You know, make sure we're comfortable with that um. So I I just don't want, want to be any issues with the funding side of it, so uh we talked through that where. Um you're pretty comfortable with the re-bone.
Yeah, so the re-bone is a interest, the interest law. And in visiting with uh this Angie who works with that. Um this morning, she indicated what amount of that loan we could get on this project. And that would be like one point five, hundred point six mil towards this project. The red leg loan is the no interest and you can uh. Ask for up to two million on that, which we did, that was our application, but. With the environmental study that goes with it and the timeline of getting that all submitted by the September. Thirtieth deadline didn't happen, so now we're in the second quarter and that deadline is December thirty-first, so. We won't know until probably February whether we would get that phone or not.
And it's a loan, but it's no interest, correct?
And that was a little bit of what we were trying to work through is trying to figure out some of the timing of the red leg, uh just just knowing. Working back through the USDA, federal government side of it, it's just. At times it takes a lot, a lot of time to actually then finally get the money and different things, so we. That's what we're working on, we're just trying to make sure we had had that covered um. Another thing to add to that too is when Carolyn and I talk. Um Carolyn, you're planning on the water sewer funds to pay roughly six hundred thousand, I think is what we're covering. Uh of the water sewer portions of the project um and then the DOT. Community Access Grant that we have, six hundred thousand as well, so right there is one point three. And then the read, the read would be one point six, so we're right around three million um. But I think there's, there's a little bit of a, a gap we're kind of looking into and uh. Yeah, probably a. Million dollar gap there um. So, Patrick and I think we're exploring local, local funding for that, local, local bank funding for that.
Does anyone have any questions on the financing part of it then?
I I would just have a comment, so if we were to get the red leg for the two million with no interest, I assume we could just reduce the. Read money?
No, because we'll need that in order to finance the whole project.
Okay. Well, if the read money is two million and uh. Others one point six, and we have six hundred thousand grand, we'd be, wouldn't we be over four?
Yeah, it seemed like four point two.
Roughly, yeah.
For give everything.
Yeah, but. And the, I guess they did get the project cost down, but. Yeah, I guess whether we take that whole two million, you know, I guess because we take it in payments, I don't know. We could turn around and pay it right back if we, you know, took it, I guess I'd feel more comfortable having it. Does that make sense? Did I answer your question?
Yep, yeah, yeah, just so we're kind of flexible, yeah, okay, that's good.
You know, since that's the max we can take, we have two million, we're more comfortable. We just turn around and get, because there's no interest.
Rather than being short.
Yeah, right.
And 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 today when we had the call with the USDA person, he even mentioned that. Say, say you don't, you don't get it, well, you can continue to apply, you know, they might end up getting more money, more funded um.
Just go to the third quarter and. And so again, in the second quarter, and if we found some, uh if we've used some of these other sources we've mentioned. Uh when we get that, we can use that to pay the the others off, so.
What are you looking at payment as, is it quarterly, or is it how do you pay your loans off?
Well, like with the um Main Street project, that was based on a monthly payment. And it was attached to the electric bill. I wonder if it's just as a. Payment on that. Seventy-five hundred a month, or yes, seventy-five hundred a month for the Main Street one, but. You could only borrow up to nine hundred thousand on that project, then they raised that to up to the two million now, so. Um I know Don shared that number with us in an email, but I don't remember what that is right now.
Sorry.
No, it's a good, very good question, yeah, if it's a loan, you have to pay it back. The six hundred thousand grant one, we don't have to pay back, that's a good thing.
But it would be a monthly payment.
But that's where it would be coming out of the water and sewer, that.
General fund, which would be sales tax revenue.
And and from a project standpoint, if you don't say the project's going to last three, four months. Just just like all the, all the other projects, that's going to be, it kind of ramps up, say, starts in March, June and July is probably going to be the biggest. Payments because of the pavement, and it's going to ramp back down um. So you don't, you don't need to have four million all at once either.
Sorry, then at the end, they're going to come up, don't want budget, you're going to come back and say, well.
Fingers crossed, fingers crossed.
And as far as completion of the project, if we were to award this tonight. When do you project that they would start?
I'll, I'll, I'll talk to Holstein about that, um my, just kind of. General thinking would be roughly March, um knowing when the weather's a little better and. Stays like this, maybe sooner.
And awarding it now gives them an opportunity to order in their materials. And so if we have that crazy supply issue that keeps raising its ugly head. That would give us some time to work through that. And then the completion date, how long will it take them to complete the project? Starting in March and run to?
I roughly think um. Fall, you know, at worst case is really what I'm thinking, or if they don't get started until later, then it'll be. Later in the fall, and that's what I've been kind of talking to the property owners out there too is. Really expect all summer long in general, there's some sort of construction activity out there. And we, we did add some language um from some thoughts Garrett had of. Say they go do some utilities for two months and then the paving guys don't show up for two weeks later, we have some language in there about. It's got to be neat, orderly, safety in terms of, you know, have a project kind of put aside for a week or two and. Until they come back, sort of a deal.
So projected to start in March and complete October, is she?
Yeah, roughly.
Halloween. Alright.
Um, we do have, just to refresh people's memories a little bit, we do have some. We have a temporary approach bypass that'll be at Airport Road from toward that, so we'll kind of. Get on the airport property a little bit, build a tempered gravel road back over to Airport Road, so those. People that like to use Airport Road trucks, whatever, can still keep doing that, um and then we're going to have a temporary. Same thing on the south side, so people can get in and out of Golden West and um the Crown Oil right there um. Kind of get in and out of there, so. Then other than that, there's going to be, yeah, some inconvenience for people to. Get in and out of driveways at times and we've, we've talked to them, perhaps then. Everybody's really favorite the project, it's just.
So great, um Dakota Millen Green is taken care of, right? They'll, trucks will have access, what about Sleepy Hollow?
Uh yeah, we talked to him a couple of times there, we're actually going to build him as well a temporary. Um on Myrtle. Just to uh north Myrtle a little bit, we're going to build him a little gravel temporary. So he can get back into his main driveway too, so lots of signage. Out on the exits and stuff to tell them, okay, Sleepy Hollow this way. Waldrug this way, and then when we have to close it and do it, do it the other way, we sort of change the arrows and stuff, but lots of signage and. Can always add more if we don't think it's working the right way.
He just didn't have a little um question about it, because he. His um booking site is down right now, and then he opens it up, but he always gives. Directions to how to get, how to get into town, and he was concerned about that.
I'll get, I'll get with him to see how he's doing that in terms of. He's able to update that or give a map or something.
He, he, I know he wanted to talk to you about that, because he, he. He always gave specific directions, take one oh nine or one ten, and he just doesn't know how that's going to happen. Now, you know, and he, I forget, he said February or March, maybe? February probably, he's going to open his site, so need to know that information.
Yeah, that'll work, I need to call him anyways and. Updates, so um yeah, that'll work, um I just got done meeting with. Chris at the church and talking to him about his parking lot and easement and stuff like that.
I, I cannot remember what you said on Dakota Mills driveway, was we not going to be down for a short bit, or did you not think we were, or?
The, the contractor doesn't really think so, that you'll be down, um now. I think it would be helpful if there would be, say, two, three days that maybe you had some maintenance you wanted to do.
That's what I was asking, but it'll likely shut down for maintenance.
And and I think the best thing we can do is, when we get ready to have a pre-con is. You know, have people like you there, Jerry, and I know that a sheriff's deputy wanted to be there. Um campground, uh church, Crown Oil, and just. Kind of work through all those things of some of the, the bigger users of the, within the project and. And and then, then we'll have periodic meetings anyways, and those same people can keep coming, get updates and. Yes, with that, I, I guess, I, I think we're in a good spot, I recommend award, I think we got the finance um loan stuff sort of. Figured out there a little bit.
Yeah, any other questions or concerns? If not, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve uh or to award the bid for the Fourth Avenue and Avenue project.
I'd make that motion.
Okay, Rick has moved. They picked your choice there, but the motion has been seconded to award uh the bid to um. Holstein Excavating Incorporated and the reward of the contract is three. Million nine hundred and thirty-two thousand two hundred and forty-eight dollars and thirty-seven cents for the West Fourth. Avenue Street Improvement. Are there any other questions about? This motion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay, bullshit carries. Thank you, Dan.
I did put those two forms in front of you, if you'd want to sign an extra, could you?
Okay, so you need those tonight, or?
Um, I can do tonight, or I can get them some other time too.
Okay, alright, see if I can.
Signs them, I could just scan to you now. Oh, I see.
Okay, alright, thank you, sir. That brings us to item number sixteen in the chamber report. And the community center report, which was also uh attached to your packet.
Yeah, um hello, uh the community center reports in there, like Mary said, and. Starting to get really busy, we've been having the wrestlers in there, the high school wrestlers, and we're getting the AAU kids here, I think next week. So they're keeping things interesting around here, I walked in. A couple nights ago when they were playing dodgeball and pitch black, so they they keep things entertaining, um and then uh. Chamber updates, we had the pancake supper last night, it went awesome, it was what, six hundred and thirty people was your. Was your um count, so that was pretty cool and um. Yeah, it was, it was fun seeing everybody come out last night and a big thank you to Waldrug because you guys did an outstanding job. Very little work on our behalf, a lot on yours, so.
It was a great event, and and we're appreciative of all the people that you got to show up, the support, because that's a lot of people and.
Yeah.
They really pitched them, and I, I thought it went very well.
Well, good, good, I'm glad that, glad that it went good, and we did the drawing for the um, for the. Wall box, yeah, today and the shopping spree, so they did good. Oh man, that was the first one of those Facebook lives I've ever done, and it was nerve wracking after about the first five minutes, and it's fine, but. But yes, we did that, so that's uh, I think all the winners have mostly been notified except for you, I couldn't get a hold of, and then we also did our first drawing for the holiday sweepstakes, so. We'll continue those the next couple of weeks and then do a big one at the end. And then um Tuesday night's the parade, um so is there anybody here that doesn't have a float in the parade? That would be interested in judging, if so, let me know, because we're looking for three judges um. And let's see, and that will start uh lineups at five fifteen at the school parking lot, and then it will start at five thirty, so. And then afterwards, the Catholic Church is having a Mexican feast, and then the Salty Steer is also having a chili and fried bread. And a kids dance, so there's things to do afterwards. Um and then what else do we have, um? There's also, we are having an ugly elephant Christmas party on December twenty-second at six P M. And the F C C L A kids are going to do babysitting at the powerhouse from five thirty to ten thirty, and that is a signup early deal, so if. Anybody asks, they need to get their kids signed up so that we can make a plan for snacks. And then um, yes, where is this sweater, yeah, the elephant is here, and then they babysit over there. Yeah, yeah, and then um there, and we're also going, so it's an ugly sweater contest and uh white elephant gift exchange. So if you're going to do the white elephant gift exchange, we also would like you to sign up for that, and then um. And then we're going to have potluck, we're going to have some snacks here, a big charcuterie board, and Badlands uh Salona Girl is going to do the, a cash bar, so. Lots of cornball boards out, some card tables, I think we're, have somebody checking to see if the Shreiners would like to do a little card game or something up there and. Or, you know, up in the front, and so we're trying to just make a fun gathering rep for Christmas. Fun gallery rep for Christmas and hopefully it goes well. Anybody have any questions? I think that's all I have.
I wondered about the parade, will you have like a assigned lineup or everybody just comes and pulls into line? Like fire trucks in the lead and great question, huh?
That is a good question and actually there's several questions that I have for Lily that I figured out this week, so I will hopefully know more soon. Yeah, I'm assuming we'll have some sort of an order.
Okay, perfect, just wondering.
We're gonna make Garrett direct everything, I think that's what we're gonna do, right? Anything else? Okay, thank you.
Okay, good job, sounds fun and thank you, Rick, that was an astounding event last night, just like, thank you for it, you do. Your staff. I, it's just amazing, they're, they know what they're doing and they're so helpful and. You just, you, they do really well.
It's really a fun community event that's been going on for a lot of years and and we have the benefit. That this year, fantastic weather, had one of the highest turnouts ever, so that's exciting.
Yeah. Okay, good job. Okay, while economics is going.
Hello, um we held our annual meeting and Vinnie Shoppe was our guest speaker, we had a really good turnout and we got a lot of good feedback from that. Um, we did have an election at the meeting, so our new board member is Denny Morton, uh she's local here and she's. Uh from Bill Dakota, uh she's there. For ring manager and she actually helped us do the presentation for the Dakota Scholarship Breakfast and everything, so. She'll be a great asset to the board and we do have a new high school representative, Adwell Lewis Ranfor and. He helped us do the ballots and everything at the meeting and did a good job, looks like it'll be a good one too, so that's exciting and um. Yeah, I guess, look forward to a parade of lights for next week and just kind of going through year end things and. Addressing budget things, the last minute items before the first of the year, our next meeting is December twenty-second at six P M. Twenty-seven, oh yes, two days after hers, not two days before. Oh, yeah, no, no, uh December twenty-seventh, but um you have anything for me? Or I'm actually not feeling very well tonight, so I'm gonna excuse myself early, but thank you guys.
Okay, thank you, Kendall. Alright, number eighteen on the agenda, Mike, would you like to? Bring this, bring us up to speed here.
So basically, I was just contacted by a member of the community who was contacted by. Um, somebody who lived at uh Prairie Village, which is the concern that um on. Let's see here. Uh, the specific dates. Let's see here.
November twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, that are, that a call, um you know, was placed at uh. And it seems pretty accurate, because that's what I was told, is about twelve thirty a call came in and that basically um. That it wasn't until um. One thirty, when um some of the local crew showed up. In response to that and there was just some concern there, I talked with Jim um. About it, um maybe because, you know, you get all kinds of people who uh um. You know, say things and before I, you know, I just wanted to gather information and just have discussion on it in regards to. You know, if there's anything that we could do, um and, you know, I. Uh Jerome's here, Jerome, did you actually talk to Jim Kiderman as well? You've been in contact with him in regards to it?
Yeah, Chief Kiderman's actually under the weather today. Yeah, I did speak with him a little bit about it and uh. The concern, my concern isn't necessarily about the response, everything on our end worked, the fire department responded. Isn't appropriate quickly as it is on Hollywood all the time, no, it always question, always question, why do the fire departments? Get blamed for firearms? That seems to be a very common thing, and while you blame the fire department. When in fact this alarm, the problem to this thing is the actual alarm and it's created a situation of pager fatigue. And I've been to the same situation, it's going off again, it's going off again, it's going off again, that's only so many time you can hit the horses up and get them off the door.
Hundred percent.
Yeah, you know, Chief Dan, you know, it's the same thing, so the uh, if it had been something beyond. Uh I, you know, you guys have seen your fire department respond, they had to do a fantastic job, you got some crack people, you got good equipment. Uh, the problem in that from here, we gave you some action items to look at. Is the fact that the alarm system is very antiquated, it's a, it's a smoke detecting system. And it should be heat detected and that actually, we changed that in uh New Underwood. And if you look at the timeline in New Underwood, it's following the same timeline and the same type of facility owned by Penny County Housing Authority. Which is not associated with Penny County, Penny County government and I've dealt with housing authorities before, previous lives, I've dealt with this one. They need to modernize their um detection system from the other active items we gave you. And get that straightened out and take that load off of the volunteers, so when there's an actual call there, they know there's a problem. And it comes down to pager fatigue on this one.
And then also what Mike to have is they, it's like they depend on us to come down there and reset their fire.
That's absolutely most ridiculous thing, you should not be in a position of resetting no arms, it's their facility, it's not. My understanding, City of Wall doesn't have anything to do with that, the fire department doesn't have any ownership in the new facility whatsoever. And that's, it's been that and I have no problem uh. Mike standing up with you guys in the Penny County Housing Authority, cause I've told them before, that's enough, you cannot transfer that responsibility. For that alarm system resetting of it, et cetera, onto the fire department. The fire departments in South Dakota were never set up as enforcement agencies. That's why you have the parent organization such as the City of Wall in this, in this instance, now, yes, places like Rapid City, um. Aberdeen, places like that have some enforcement responsibilities through their Fire Marshal's Office for prevention, et cetera, so that was transferred, that special is transferred. The rest of the state of South Dakota is not, none of the fire departments are enforcement and that's the problem here, is they've, they've been allowed to get away with it, there's. A call every one and a half days, there's a call for service to the same address. Some type that's causing the fire department, the ambulance or law enforcement to engage there and stop, you know, get with them. We can help you technically, uh we've dealt with it before and it gets this changed to a proper alarm system and let's get the load off in the background volunteers and call them off, we actually need them.
Because it's amazing, if you look at. Report that he gave you, fire related calls were twelve, emergency medical calls were fifty-five, law enforcement five hundred and ninety-nine times. Since January of twenty-one.
Yeah, so you're getting, you're getting a call every one and a half days of that and don't, you know, um don't think that the. Fire guys and ambulance guys and police guy have been talking to each other some time, cause everybody's hearing that same call and it creates that whole scenario in the back of your head. With some, one of us, fire, ambulance, police, one of us are always going to that same address, when is somebody gonna do something? And it was, it was, it's the same time, it's, it's almost identical to what happened in New Underwood, it was got, that's enough, you've gotta change it. They changed the alarm system and I only think there's only been um. Getting my timelines, we, we got very big, so I mean like once or twice that they've actually been called since that system was switched over and there was a real problem, everybody responded. Cause of all, we haven't been there for a while, there's a real problem there, so.
How did you get to New Underwood?
What's that?
How did you go about getting there?
Hold them and knock it off. And that's enough and we, we showed them the data, what was going on, um initially they got a little uh. Be a little smart aleck about it, it's like, well, okay, that's enough, you're, you're, you're probably just come out of bed, you guys causing, you gotta respond, leave a little place at the work. Um, it's caught him in a strain on the department, what do you think will be coming to your problem? And uh got with him and showed him and helped him with that, you guys are the authority here, you guys are the enforcement authority. We certainly can help you get some technicals coming up, that what's going on there absolutely needs to change.
Yeah, it used to be worse, I mean, it used to be every time somebody burned a bag of popcorn, it would go off and yeah, they'd come there. Yeah, I mean, there's smoking cigarettes in there, it was. Garrett, how, how many calls from that address?
It was, maybe one and a half days, yeah.
In, in what time period?
That was from January.
January first two thousand twenty-one, I haven't go back and give us a better timeline.
To date?
Yeah, it's on there to the third of.
It's on there too.
To the, to the thirtieth of, of uh.
Oh my goodness, that's horrible, that's crazy.
Yeah, you know, I mean, you guys have senior fire department here on Main Street, you know, when there was a problem, they were here, they were here. This has just turned into this, oh my god, here we go again, and it's a credible situation. Yeah, so by your medical and law, there was a total of six hundred and sixty-six called. In that time, so is there a home manager there or? That's the thing, that's, that's the thing that I put that, put that in those action items, Mike, is somebody needs to be responsible there. Somebody needs to find out and they need to be held responsible for it, instead of shifting that, you know, it's easy to do that. The fire department shows up, big red trucks and shiny lights and everything and I just want to do it on T V, you know, the guys on T V in Hollywood did it. But you're shifting, it's easy to shift that blame on the fire department, or the responsibility will still, no matter what. Belongs to the building owner and the responsible part.
But we certainly appreciate you coming down and kind of uh, I, I didn't realize that it was this much of an issue, you know, um.
Well, maybe you're, I really appreciate you giving us a heads up and you got a chance to work through this and give a chance to look at it, the. The positive things on Chief Danny, or those things that he did in the past, the foundation he laid for us and our guys, and the guys are gone, going, you know, a lot of things. The things work, we have an Austin dispatch, we have the best, but absolutely the finest dispatchers in the um, five state region, we got good communications. All that piece of work, there's no problem with it, our dispatchers are empowered to do things. Um, there's a, there's a little bit like we talked about, you know, whatever people are talking about or the gossip is. You've got to be careful how data is parsed out, how you read it on the actual uh run report. And where that data is actually going to and what's actually being read, that's, that confuses a lot of people what they're seeing. But it comes down to it, you know, the response is gonna have, the response did happen, there's a timeline you like to prefer to have. Not necessarily, but what is the underlying factor, what actually happened? You know, it's just, I can't, you know, I've, I've been right there, it's like, oh, here we go again. Whatever you guys, we were able to look at, so hopefully this information will help you, whatever. Whatever technical assistance the office can give to you, we doubled the county firefighter report from one to two. Watch out world, so if you can, you know, we've got quite a bit of information from. What we did with them and New Underwood, that that would help you guys, we certainly, you know, we answer that, but it really wrapped between. The city uh enforcement of what's going on and and them straighten and getting their act together.
Appreciate you, Douglas, cause I had heard to Quinn beat the wall, but it's more there.
I'll, I'll address that and I'll go back to uh when the chief was doing it, they changed things a bunch of years ago. That's one of the best things we did and, yeah. Firemen are always gonna be, you know, it's very competitive, well, we beat you guys there and we put water on the fire before you did, you know, and it goes way back to colonial times. The thing is, is that there was a response and here in Pennington County, we don't care. Nobody, I've never had anybody come out and say to me, oh my god, the fire truck, this wasn't the right fire truck, it wasn't the right color. It's always, thank god, somebody's actually here and we, and you guys saw that on Main Street years, a year or so ago, it doesn't matter, you know, so. And sure, everybody that was gonna take a picture of the first truck there, when in fact, if you look at, I was listening to the call. It was actually your people that were there first, first truck that had flash and light for their, of course, everybody focuses on that, so what else is going on? Ron had one, actually had one where the uh. Not to tell stories, Mary, I don't mean, off the subject here, but we had, I had one that was really very sensitive. It had, had some fire deaths with it and they were criticizing the fire department there because they could see another fire department's name on the side of the truck. Problem was the second in truck was actually a ladder truck and it had the name on the side of it and their engine that was. Fighting the fires on the other side of the ladder and it pops up in the photo and they got blamed, you know, it's like. And Carol's just talking about that, you don't need to send a check, just small bills.
That'd be very understandable to me, I guess, if they get the call every other day, you're gonna twelve thirty at night, you're gonna go up to that time.
Yeah, yeah, it's hard to, and I mean. I'm guilty of it too, I mean, there's times where I look at it, it's like it's one o'clock in the morning, like it's Prairie Village again, you know? Yeah. I got up last week to go over there and somebody was smoking a cigarette in the hallway and then said it off, this is. Yeah, I mean, it says, there you go, there you go, when you guys telling you right there what's going on.
That's not okay in itself, because that is, there's no smoking inside that building, the smoking area is across their parking lot. So that alone is a big issue that it has to be addressed, excuse me.
Well, and it, I, it just, it affects every resident in there, I mean, hopefully, you know, uh. Somebody doesn't just stay in their apartment because they think somebody's smoking in the hallway again and then we have a totally different situation.
Yeah, so you're right on, you're right on point with that, cause it, it creates that cascade effect. You know, the root problem isn't the fire department in this case and showing up and all the other stuff, you know, the, the rumor mill that's out there. The root cause comes down here, not taking care of the facility, look at the avalanche effect it's had, you have your own people sitting there, you're telling him, you know. I've, I've been right there, I mean, and I was in a position, I didn't have a choice, I had, we had to go back, you know, go back and that's, we deal with that, we're dealing with this on. Probably call line that we have is, you know, okay, it's gone, you gotta get back on the, you know, gotta get down to the end in this whole time, we've got another one. And we're, we're dealing with that, not just here, but nationwide, just with, with the sheer volume and stuff going on. This, this, the pandemic, we're up eighty-nine percent in Hall Line and Penny County, well, and uh, you know, we're. Third in the nation for volunteer parish service group, we're quiet, you know, we rely on these people and we're six thousand plus called, we'll probably be somewhere else, seven thousand called this year. That we rely on guys like Garrett and you guys work with Garrett, et cetera, and families and you know, some of these guys, Billy Carries.
Garrett, how do you handle it when it goes off? You just go shut it off or do you?
My really, my thought was, it puts one thirty in the morning, just bang on the damn door in there and get them all out of bed. Eventually they'll get tired of it and tell the people.
Yeah, none of, I, I don't, none of them do, usually, usually what happens is. Somebody will just drive their personal vehicle there and go in and go in a room and, and reset the alarm.
Yeah, my, and my advice fall off on that is that you guys really need to spend, you know, contact the Penny County Housing Authority and say, okay, that, that's enough of this. You know, it needs to come with a way to the, of the city council. You know, this is enough of this, so you're, you're stringing the whole system, what you're doing.
Okay, any other questions? Do I have the consensus of the council then, that number one, the appropriate committee persons will address this problem? Meet with uh Pennington County Housing, secondly, and third, uh. There's one, two, three, four action items on this list that he has provided us and we follow that to a T. Do I have the consensus that that would, that that is how we will proceed? Because we are not gonna ignore this and those kind of numbers and if this is gone, if New Underwood can solve it, so can we.
You guys, this is a solvable issue, it's really, Mike, it's one of those things where you just gotta go and tell them, fail, this is enough. And that's, basically, that's what happened with New Underwood, like, this, not this off, you know, and you're gonna. You're gonna hear sorts of like, oh my god, we're not making money, we're not doing, well, who cares? You're stressing everybody out about this thing, it's tough and whatever, I just please remember today's for Harvard Day. Thank you very much, anything else I can do right here?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for having us.
You're an awesome guy. Okay, so Carolyn, um I know we know who the chair or the president or whatever his name is. Administrator of the of Pennington County Housing and so let's get a meeting set up with him and like I said, the. Appropriate committee and I can't find my list at the moment, figure out who that's gonna be, but we. Garrett, do you feel like we have enough time to address this after the holidays or is this uh next week?
Oh, I would say that after the holidays would be fine.
But if you're still getting a day and a half?
It's, that's just an average.
Well, that means that some days there is more than one.
Yeah, yeah, but you know, like, where was it, we averaged twelve calls, fire department in, was it two years? Or whatever, so, and it's mostly, it's mostly law enforcement.
Yeah.
But still.
Yeah, even law enforcement, I mean, we. It's, and, and I've kind of seen uh a hard turn in some of the residents that they have there and we have, I mean, a lot. It's a housing facility for some of our elderly community members and some of the people that are. Being accepted to live there are making. Being accepted to live there are making conditions very difficult for some of those people, and it's not there.
I think. It's better now than it has been. I mean, it used to be really bad, I think, for a couple of days.
It took a sharp turn there recently, so that would be another thing that we will address. What's going on?
Or maybe just somebody there, you know, like a a housing manager, something that that can, you know, kind of. Well, because they don't have somebody there all of the time, and when they should, because it's, you know, that person can report. You know, certain issues, or you you get so many calls. Where this person's responding to a simple assault, domestic violence in here two times a month, you're out of here, you know, we can't have that here.
Well, then there used to be someone, they used to have like a. Manager person, you go in there and they're like, I don't know how to run it, you know, you guys shut it on. Five hundred thousand dollars every.
They got called that night too, and I don't know why they ended up calling that night.
Because usually, usually when there's a structure fire, they. It's us and Jerome and the ambulance, and and there's different. Alarms, I, you know, like they say, three alarm fire, whatever, that's, that's. You know, they start, uh, painting more and letting people out. Everything goes on, but there's a list of who structured fire, this is who you.
So that just bought the ambulance some money?
Yeah.
Time, wages, right?
Okay.
No, but I, I mean, I guess if we could get it set up before then, fine.
Yeah, I would, I would say it's one of those matters where we. Gonna start moving ahead of who's on that.
I am. One of the fire, but I can't find the rest of the list, Mary, I'm sorry.
So is it just that? That's what I'm trying to figure that out, what, what group is, oh, thanks, I think that's what I was looking. Because obviously, it does involve police, fire, ambulance, all of that falls.
Well, emergency services would be.
And that's Dan and Mike.
The police, fire, ambulance.
All of those.
You want to be?
Your community services and.
There were twelve fire line calls that. Residents, yeah, but they have on here. Since. January first of twenty twenty one.
This is a, this is what Trump sent out.
So.
Yeah, I'm looking at it right here.
Okay. Okay.
It doesn't seem like that many, but at two o'clock in the morning? It gets pretty late, and then you can't go back to sleep.
You guys are volunteers, that's. That's not good, I mean, same with the anger.
So we'll just, we'll just.
Reach out to the gentleman that we need to talk to, and and. We've had a conversation with him once before, so we'll get him to the table again, and.
I think we kind of have everything lined up. From the start, I think we might have a little bit more success than the actual mistake. Yeah, just kind of corner him and say. Here's all the documentation, and all of these fellows are the ones responding, so we got rid of the problem.
Yeah, the meeting, well, just invite us all. Have Paul Council there, might get their attention, sorry.
Yeah, I really think updating, you know. And going from the smoke to the heat would.
We'll talk a lot, right there.
Shouldn't be that big a deal. If, unless the whole, unless it's really old, but they shouldn't be able to just change the head.
Yeah, because I think before it was wired into the rooms also, and now it's just. There's like one guy hugging varnish and it's set it on.
Because yeah, the rooms just have a battery operated, one in them now, they're not plugged into the alarm system.
Well, they did all that remodeling over there anyway, it's kind of funny that wouldn't have been something that they would have addressed, but. Okay, okay. All right, anything else on that, Dan, we've got a plan? When you will. Um, and that if you're serious about wanting the whole council there, we can certainly address that too, so. We'll talk about that further, then, Caroline. All right, that brings us to item number nineteen, mayor's report. Um, Echo Valley Project, uh, walkthrough occurred on, um. November twenty seventh, and, um, city council members that were there were, um. Rick was there, myself, Garrett and Carolyn, as well as the K L J engineers, Tim and Dana. As well as the quality-driven contractors, and since Dana's in the room, would you like to talk about? That walkthrough?
Yeah. Uh, so we had a real good walkthrough with, um, everybody, uh, Mary mentioned there, and. Um, we created a punch list on just. Some action items, uh, that they needed to do to complete the project, and it was nice to see that quickly just. Morphed right into doing all those action items, almost punch lists, and it was. You know, relatively minor things, um, cleanup and seating and. Um, so a few things like that, and, um, they got those knocked out within a, within a week, um, which is great. And, um, since then, we've been just working on final closeout paperwork, which would be. Final payment, um, final acceptance form, um. Carolyn needed a, a lien waiver release for some of the funding that she has for that project and. Um. Quality-driven, sign that and turn that back in, so we'll get there and. But the next steps is, uh, we'll be back with some of that final paperwork, um, final payment request, and. We'll be done with that one, it, um. Looks, stuff looks pretty good out there, and it'll look even better in the spring when the grass is growing, and. Hopefully, people are starting to put foundations in. Any questions on that project?
And I did visit, uh, with two of the owners, and they will, um. Be fencing, uh, right there north of. Sikor's home, to, uh, avoid letting that be a drive-through from. Don't drive, because they're actually driving across people's personal property. Or lots, those lots are state, and sooner or later, they'll start knocking that, those down. So that is the developer's responsibility, to get that taken care of, they've got a made aware, and and. So it's not ours, it's. Their deal, so that discussion happened, and so. But other than that, it really turned out really well, and it does look beautiful out there, and lots are selling, so.
Yeah, it's nice to see the interest already out there, I think they'll even be more, I would start.
Take the barricades and that stuff, you want to take that down?
Well, that's a good question, do we open that up? Because my concern was that it might become like. Indy five hundred for some of our young people that love to cruise town, um. Do we leave that barricaded, or do we open it up and let it be?
I would almost say give it a little bit of time, because of those. The, uh, ditches and stuff like that are pretty soft, I walked out there, just maybe give, give some time for some moisture to sit on it and self-pack a little bit, because. With nobody doing a whole lot of work back there yet, um, yeah, that would be probably a bit of a concern. Because there is a back way to get over to that little dam too, and people could be kind of moving around back there, I would just leave it closed.
Okay, we'll. We'll make those barricades a little more.
So they stand up in the wind, mainly, and it seems like we have wind these days, so.
Yeah, that might be okay until somebody really gets set to start building out there.
Right.
Yeah, and anybody that wants to go look at a lot, I'm sure, I mean.
Well, if you leave the cones there too, they can get around the cones, but. But most teenagers won't get out of a car to move a cone, so they won't go there.
Or just run over them.
Or they run over, yeah, okay, I have one thing. Anyway, okay, thank you, Dan.
Yeah, thank you, nothing else for me, I think, at all.
Okay, drive safely, although there's a lot of deer, but.
There is a lot of deer, ours.
So be careful, thank you for your time this evening, and then two days later, we had, uh. Uh, airport, uh, walkthrough too. And I'm receiving compliments on that, and how nice that's done, that meeting was, uh, the twenty ninth. And again, Rick, Carolyn, Garrett, Preston, uh, attended that meeting, two Western contract. Construction, uh, gentlemen, four South Dakota D O T guys came out from Pierford. And two Mead Hunt, uh, engineers were there, and so the discussions was the capital improvement. Plan, which that was discussed, what should have priority, how should we move forward with that? Also, a discussion about building hangers and a fuel system, and the fun thing is. Uh, we noticed that the sign, the billboard that. The chamber had, and then we replaced that sign and put it actually on the building. Uh, Mead Hunt engineer put this graphic together for us. And we're going to move forward with getting this. Uh, graphic and put it on that billboard there. We, we were just gonna repurpose that, but we're gonna keep it now. And the reason for this is that we are looking for investors that want to, um, build hangers. Because one of the things that came out of that meeting is that, uh, hangers is a very, um, tight thing, uh. Rapid City is hard to get in, Airport is hard to get in and out, Sturgis, Spurfish Hot Springs are kind of max in their capacity. So we've got space, and, uh, there's interest in things like medevac, there's. Like wildlife, land, fire, uh, would be interested. And so the purpose of this, um, graphic would be to try to entertain. Investors that might want to build a hangar. And if I'm correct, then those hangar, uh, since that actually is a. City land, they would build the hangar, but owe us rent, is that how, what happens now, or no? Are all those hangers up there?
They built their own hangers, and then they lease the land that it's.
Exactly, so what I recognize that to be is a source of revenue. If we can make that happen, and there certainly is, um, interest in doing that. So that's the purpose of this particular, um. A graphic, and there's even a way for them to call the city office if anyone is interested in doing it. So all that is, is we're kind of, sorry, we're copycatting. While drug, using billboards to promote an idea.
It works, man.
Okay, we gotta give it free ice water on here somewhere. So that's kind of what happened, um, as far as the. The airport, uh, any comments from anybody?
When you leave South, hey, they had to. Design that, when they know, it could say free ice water.
Yeah, no kidding. So now somebody, I was not aware of it, but somebody said there was a plane that did not land, but.
It buzzed the runway real low, big plane.
A big plane. Does anyone know about that big plane being in town today?
You heard it?
I felt it.
I was loading car and seeing it circle around, and. Then it came from. Like they were, like they were gonna land, but they get buzzed there and kept, I thought maybe you guys were testing that.
It's funny, nobody mentioned it, but it was supposed to happen.
Didn't they say that somebody was gonna come in and do an inspection like that?
But it's funny, they didn't say anything, so.
That's six passenger windows besides the cop.
I could talk to Dave and see if he knows anything about it tomorrow.
Okay, so Carolyn, is the airport officially open?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
We filed notice today with the help of Dalton from Mead Hunt, the engineer. Thank goodness. Filed, I think there was eight notices filed, based on the crosswind runway, because that's closed now, until. And just several different ones.
So the original game plan was, we were gonna try to get media down here and do a little, you know, let an airplane land and look at, we're open. However, Preston, uh, put thumbs down on that because of the wind tomorrow. We really don't want media down here and then watch somebody come in here and flip a plane, so. That is actually going, something similar is in the works now to do that on. About Wednesday of next week, because that is better weather. It may be a full media thing, but it will get coverage, so that's being worked out as we speak, so. We will get, and then follow that up in the spring with a really neat grand opening or fly in. Preston and, uh, Katie are working on that, and they've got some great ideas on how to do that. So that's what's going on with the airport, do we have any questions or?
Wednesday, the thirteenth, right?
Exactly, the day of the thirteenth, yes, whatever next Wednesday is, it sounds like that's gonna work best, so.
Right, when do you think you have fuel up there?
That's, that's a great discussion, um, item, oh, and that's the best part, thank you for making me think of that. So one of the things that came up at the meeting is that we need a local airport board. So again, that would, the airport falls under Stan Rick's committee, and then we will have local people. Join that board and start making some local dis- uh, decisions on. Moving forward and hang your locations and whatever local airport boards do. But that was a request that came out of this airport meeting, so we will make that happen.
Will Preston be part of it?
Yes, he will be, yes, he will.
Won't have fuel as soon as we would like, though, because on that capital improvement. That's like a seven hundred thousand dollar.
Holy cow, really?
Project, and we need to build some. Money back.
One, I'm just curious how much it would bring in, this. People landed to refuel the.
They're saying to build the hangers is gonna bring more than the.
The fuel isn't actually, because we can, well, first of all, Philip has got fuel, can you believe it? So if I'm a pilot and I'm flying over and I can fuel at Philip or Wal, where would you as a pilot want to stop? You're right, right here, so what fuel would do would be a reason for pilots to stop here instead of thirty miles back there. And then walk down and visit Wal Drug for their donuts and. Yeah, whatever, so that would be the push to try to get that, that fuel sooner. And yes, according to the weight of fence, that's the cost of it, but, uh, in visiting with some other, like faith. I know they did that for less, so that's a, that's a discussion that this local board might do and pursue and make that happen. Whenever, so that, that's what that board would be about.
Or may I go, may I, I've been out to. Jed, because do they have their own fuel tanks inside the hangers then, or where do they fuel?
Just Preston.
Preston has its own.
Because I wouldn't want a garage and not be able to leave with a full tank of gas.
Yeah.
That's just.
Exactly, so anyway, again. Uh, very exciting things in terms of Echo Valley Airport and now Fourth Avenue. We're just, um, doing good stuff here. Okay. I think that's, um. That's exciting, the airport is open, and someone told me how nice the lights work. Or looked, are the lights on? I'm gonna have to go take a drive for that, I don't know where I'm.
Yeah, they were all back for school today.
Cool, all right. We'll go take a look, everybody, before they go home, drive out there and look at the airport. Thanks, okay, so twenty, finance office report, let Carolyn, please.
So, um. I don't know if you remember, it started. Last spring about the Pennington County doing their mitigation plan, and Kelly and I were kind of. Part of that process, and worst, worst time to be doing that, like the summer and stuff, but, um. Made a couple of meetings for that, and now they're ready. Made a couple of meetings for that and now they're ready to do a community meeting. And that has been scheduled for December twelfth at ten o'clock. But and it would be open to some, to the public, but they really want some stakeholders, so to speak. So I'm guessing like if you could try to make that meeting.
Is that in rapid again?
No, it'll be held here at the community center. So um I'm guessing you want to this end up.
I did not get that email.
Um no, I'll be sending it out uh once she kind of gets it to me too. She just asked for the date and I'm like, well, we're just gonna have to set it and then we'll reach out to people. Um I guess I'm not really sure of who the, you know, besides Kelly. Because she had kind of just volunteered for the thing, I don't know that it she would really be on that committee, but that's. Fine and and great to have you, but would there be another council member that would be willing to try to attend that? Meeting as well, want to give you a heads up on. That, that's just next week on Tuesday.
Remind us what mitigation is?
Well, just, I mean, they want to have like flood zones in place and. Just different things, a a plan for disasters.
Disasters and stuff too, yeah.
So. Any volunteers besides Kelly?
I'm sure handed that day, I'll I'll try to make it.
Right, okay.
Perfect.
And I thought I'd, you know, try to reach out to um fire departments, have Jim and. Whatever, and I'll be putting something on Facebook or two as well.
Okay.
Very good.
I want to give you guys the heads up on that. We didn't get to have our zoning update, zoning ordinance update meeting in December. That got kind of crazy, so the next meeting is scheduled for January tenth. Just to give you an update on both that. And then wanted to let you know that next week. On. Wednesday, I will need to leave to vote here for my municipal board meeting, I will have that in the afternoon. And then we, that's the meeting that we get together with the county and try to all be working for the same purpose and. With legislation, plan and stuff like that, and then the next day, we usually attend. Or not, not that day, sorry, get my meetings mixed up. Then I would be heading back on Thursday, so.
Okay, so what's the date, it's going December?
Leave on the thirteenth and come back on the fourteenth, so I would just be out of office for that time frame.
Okay.
And that is all that I have.
Great. So that means you just. So you're aware, you she'll be gone the day that the media will come down for the airport. Well, we're not gonna invite the media, we've got another way to do to get it out. Oh, okay, so, okay. We're doing a just a a slight difference, so and that's just being, those details are worked out. But they'll get great coverage, they'll love it when you see it. Okay. Yeah. Crazy, all right, Garrett, please.
We got new skid steer, was it two weeks ago, week ago, week of last week. Um really nice, everything right. And we got to run it very much yet, but it's. Will be a nice piece of equipment.
So you're wishing for snow, I suppose?
No.
Oh, okay.
Normally I would be, but no. What do you have it?
No.
I'll check for any balance.
Say, were you gonna put Christmas lights all over it and put it in the parade?
I have lights, extra lights if you want. Probably not.
We can have a little parade dealer, I think in the works, so. So, no, it probably won't be in the.
Okay, okay, just checking.
And then just a little update on the apartment, we've got the, I got almost all the flooring in today, we just got a couple strips along the side, it's all painted. The trim should be put back on tomorrow, um then we just got to put the bathroom back together. Uh and then get a fridge and clean up and have to work on our water heater next, but. It's coming along real nice. And stuff, yes.
And so how many of you stepped in and seen this project that they've got going, Kelly's been there, Dan's been there? Have you been over to see it? Yeah, okay, if you have a minute, you gotta step by, these guys have really put their heart and soul on that and it's gonna be very nice. And they better take really good care of it when they, when we read that to a potential deputy.
Gonna get you in trouble, but I've seen you guys up on the road. And see much for wall fall protection.
Oh, it's it's N D A compliant, the road slope is, so. The safety branch is right above it, yeah, yeah, they were the correct I am or I grabbed. I thought maybe you were gonna say you heard me cussing over here. Yesterday and this morning were a rough day for me for. Cutting stuff and then realizing I cut it backwards and then, yeah. Yeah, and actually like I was. Have like Pandora on my phone, so it's like it's just plays whatever it wants to sometimes and there wasn't a really nice song on there. And then I look over, Pastor Chris is looking in the window away. Sorry. It's just music, okay. Um and then, yeah, so. I wonder if you have any other questions about that? And then Gary and Trevor spent this Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday at a water distribution class and they both took. Uh the test today, we'll find out in ten to twelve days if they pass.
Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
Yep. So they they both have been really um aggressive at getting this done, so.
Good. All right.
Kind of appreciate that and I don't have anything else.
All right. So with that being said, is there any items for discussion, no action will be taken, but Kelly?
It was brought to my attention, there is a camper. That is being lived in and it's not at the campground, and they're concerned about where the sewage goes.
I was kind of wondering that myself.
Yeah.
I'm not sure though, it's lived in a hundred percent of the time, I've been trying to watch the lights.
Well, it's all plugged in and everything.
And you say it's not in the campground, or it is?
No.
Okay.
It's. A camper adjacent to.
Probably better not be discussed without being in an executive session.
You think, okay, I didn't know about that, Derek.
Just wondering because I have the mentions and.
Yeah.
Okay.
I've been watching it, but.
I bet you.
Okay. All right, we'll um discuss that later, so uh any other items for discussion this evening? Okay, the next city council meeting will be December twenty first at six thirty P M. And uh we have. Executive second plan?
I'll make the motion, we go into executive session for the purpose of discussing legal personnel issues according to S D C L one dash twenty five dash two.
Is there a second? Is there? Absolutely, thank you ladies, all those in favor, say aye. Okay, stay with us now, Stan. Okay, I will call us out of executive session, address item number twenty five on our agenda. Does someone have a motion uh to reflect this item?
Um I make the motion, we give Gary Vernon a sixty cent an hour. Raise after completing his first six months of employment.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, uh any other concerns or questions, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed? All right, motion carries, is there any other business that needs to come before this council tonight? If not, meeting is adjourned, thank you.